Kelly's here, we gotta be ready.
All right. All right, good evening, welcome to the meeting of March night, the signing of the warrant.
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, second by Bill, any discussion, all in favor, unanimous. The approval of minutes of February 23rd?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, second by Bill, any discussion, all in favor, opposed, unanimous. Invitation to speak? All right. We will go to the first appointment that we have, is with Kelly Capace, temporary treasurer, on insurance rates. This is something that she works very hard with, with the committee, the consultants, and she has some recommendations for us tonight. But before we get to that show, I just wanna say, I've known you for a long time, and you've done a great job in that department. You're tremendously respected by the employees, retirees, when they come and ask you, ask you questions, and you're always nice, and you give a tremendous, nice response, and if you don't know, you get back to them, and I certainly wanna wish you well, in the town farms, at the HR department. You'll do a great job. Okay, so with that, look forward to your report, presentation?
I presented a letter to the board with the information that the insurance advisory committee collected on our renewal rates for 2015. Our HMO, PPO, dental and life insurance plans all renew on May 1st, and we did have some changes, the Delta Dental Plan this year had a 0% increase, so that was good, and the Blue Cross and Blue Shield, HMO and PPO plans are, have an increase this year of 7.3%, and our life insurance is renewing at 14% or a blended 13.5% overall. That's their first increase that we've had with the life insurance in five years.
And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review in detail Kelly's letter, but there's probably some things that really come into play with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. We only had an opportunity, or they only had an opportunity to-
Eight months, right.
Eight months' worth of utilization, and even in those eight months, we had 11 subscribers that used over $900,000 worth of claims. Our utilization clearly is not as bad as it was last year, where we were faced with that ridiculous rate increase, but it's still up there. The two primary reasons why we're looking at the 7.3%, one is trend, and then the other is an adjustment for the Affordable Care Act. When you look at your overall cost of your health insurance, $226,000 is the result of fees that are imposed by the Affordable Care Act, so that comes into play. Boston Mutual, yeah, the rate increases up there at 14%, but one of the problems with the Boston Mutual is we had a loss ratio of 152% for the last year, so basically, for every dollar we gave them, they were paying out $1.52. Now, what we're trying to do, and we had a meeting with Boston Mutual representatives earlier today, we looked at your overall population, and about 10 years ago, we had 600 people enrolled as actives in the basic plan, and about 250 as retirees. Now, it's almost a 50-50 split. Somewhere along the line, we've not captured 200 active contracts, and by that, I mean people that are actively working, whether they were hired part-time and then they became full-time, we miss those guys. So what we're gonna be doing this year is we've got Boston Mutual to agree to a special open enrollment for us. We're gonna try to capture those people, and down the road, that will mitigate rate increases, because right now, basically, half of the people are retired, and we're gonna try to get more active people enrolled in the plan.
What could be some of the reasons for that, Brian, when we haven't, is it that their spouse has insurance and they left, or what?
To be honest with you, I don't know what the reason is, because the town of Milford offers one of the richest basic life insurance plans in the state. It's $15,000, most other people are five or 10. You guys pay 50% of it, so I just think that, you know, somebody was hired part-time, became full-time, fell through the cracks, those sort of things. But we are addressing that issue next September, when we do the open enrollment.
You know, it's like, all of you do a very nice job, and I think, over the years, I think it shows the trend, that I think we're always a little bit lower than the other communities. But when you look at the real facts, I mean, you know, going up $142, $219, that's a lot of money for some people, you know, probably most people, and there's no way to curtail that, we've all made speeches, talked about Washington, this and that, but what were the, I think last year, the delta change was about, was it 4.5%?
Delta was a rate hold.
Last, I think it was two years ago.
Two years ago, we had, we had a moderate increase in delta, but last year was a rate hold, and this year it was a rate hold.
I apologize, I didn't introduce Brian.
I already went around and introduced him.
And this is Brian Boyle Jr., Brian's son, who's working with him now.
As far as the industry, what's like the going, what was, what are most communities going up by, do you know, Afan?
Well, I can tell you that MIA, which is the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, they develop a scale, and on the low end of the scale, it's a 3%, on the high end of the scale, it's a 10.9. The average rate increase for their groups is gonna be about 9%, so that's, for that particular, joint purchase. Commonwealth, depending upon what your plan, plan you're on, you're probably looking at a 7% rate increase on the Navigator Plan, which is their benchmark plan, and I've had other groups that had rate increases as high as 25%, but on average, I'm seeing between 12 and 14, so you're on the low end of the scale.
Brian, Kelly, you mentioned about the 250 people. As far as going forward, are there other things that we can look at that maybe next year, it might be lower than 7%?
Yeah, we are addressing that, in September, we're gonna discuss doing a special open enrollment, when, figure, hit it when the teachers come back to school, and after the 1st of July, you know, my office should have a lot more time to focus on that, and if we just do that special enrollment by itself, not at this time, when we're renewing everything else, we can really focus on, you know, getting the word out there, and getting people to enroll, and, and we also had a bad year in claims, worse than we've had in quite some years.
I mean, you know it's bad when, for every dollar you're paying them, they're paying out $1.52.
Right. I think in about six months, we've, they've paid out more in claims than we do on an average year, we've just had a bad year.
And those eight or nine individuals, you mentioned, cancer, heart attacks?
Health insurance.
I'm not exactly sure what the diagnosis was, and we really can't give that information out because of privacy rules and regulations, so, you know, even if I did know what they were, there's possible identifiers, I couldn't tell you.
My dad was in for six weeks at UMass, and his bill is about $669,000, $1,000, you know, so. You know, I just hope that, when you met with the union members and all that, what were their comments?
Um.
Understand that-
Yeah, they were, I mean, with the health insurance, they, I thought, think they were relatively pleased, considering what we had on our plate last year, 7.3% increase, I was pretty, I was pretty content with that.
And importantly, they seem to be very pleased with the Blue Cross and Blue Shield coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moving back to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, they seem to be, that has been very well received.
We've had a lot of good feedback.
Yeah, so hopefully, going forward, you'll continue to do the things, to look at, you know, overthrowing every stone, to see if there's something that can be then, so we can try to bring those-
Right.
And even if we need a meeting, well, even if you need a meeting with the board, like we meet once a year, whatever the case may be, but if there's something that, that we could look at, or maybe attempt on a, whatever scale, please let us know, let the board members know.
Definitely.
All right? And I appreciate all the work that, it's all, I think it's a no-win situation, I mean, this insurance thing, it just keeps going, and I just feel bad for the people who have to pay, you know, especially the families, and it's a, it's a big increase, large increase.
Yes.
Probably most of the people can't afford it, so it's either healthcare, or medicine, or food, or whatever the case may be, all right? I'll turn it over to Brian. Brian?
Thank you. Kelly, thank you, nice concise memo this year in terms of, you know, where we're at and what we can look at, and Brian, you know, you always have great information for us as we look at this, you know, and I say it every year, and I've said it, it's just so difficult to sit here and be happy and cheer about the fact that the insurance is only going up 7%, you know, in today's economy with the way things are. I can understand the high utilization, you know, I get that, you know, the 11 claims seem to be very, very high, so I can see where that is, and I think that was the experience we had last year also, was it last year or two years ago?
Yeah, we had very bad utilization last year.
Prior, last year, it was, it was a nightmare, it's like we walked off a cliff.
Yeah.
That's basically what it was.
It seems to be, I mean, this is based on just eight months-
Yeah.
-of utilization, 'cause we've only been with the, back with that group since May, so it was May to December.
Yeah. Has the membership numbers changed on the health insurance, you know, I mean, the enrollment? Is it-
It's been pretty stable.
Pretty stable, pretty steady.
Pretty stable, okay. So it's not a question of a, or is it a question of an aging workforce?
Well, all municipalities are faced with that problem, because basically, people get hired as a teacher, they just spend their whole career, so, yeah, an aging workforce. It's the same thing with police departments, DPWs, you know, the guys get hired, and it's their career, they don't jump ship like people do in, in industry, they more or less stay put, that's one of the factors, and then sometimes it's just, you get a bad year, you get, there's bad luck, and there's, there's, you just can't control a bad claim, I mean, if somebody develops cancer, there's not much we can do about it.
No, I understand that, and the life insurance, I mean, that's, that's optional coverage, people can either elect to take it or not, you know, the percentage is high, in reality, the dollars are very small.
Right.
I mean, I'll toss you out another scenario that I kinda see in my day-to-day practice, I do a fair amount of bankruptcy work, and I'm gonna tell you, employees are looking to squeeze every nickel and every dime they can, and if they see that they can save $7.58 in their monthly paycheck, they're gonna do it, and they're gonna forego the life insurance, so I don't know if there's, you know, much you can do to get around that, you know? I know what you wanna try and do, what we need to try and do is to equalize those numbers, so you have some of the younger employees with it, to balance off the retirees or whatever, but-
And also, our retiree group is aging.
Absolutely, sure, 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 so that's gonna lead to the higher percentage, but, you know, don't be surprised if some people say, you know, something, it's a great benefit, I'd love to have it, but as small as those dollars seem, they are significant.
Exactly.
You know?
And, and we just wanna make sure that we've touched base with everybody, because under Massachusetts law, you have to offer life insurance to your employees, and if they decline, that's okay by me-
Sure.
But I want them to sign off on a little waiver sheet from Boston Mutual that says, hey, it was offered to me, and I said, thanks, but no thanks, and make sure that all the employees have either signed one of those or enrolled, and we just really wanna target everybody to make sure, number one, that we've captured everybody, and number two, that we've got little no-thanks-but-no-thanks forms from everybody who didn't take it, that's all.
Yeah, and that's fine, so, I mean, you know, in the reality of things occurring nationwide, both in the municipal end and even the private end, a 7% increase, I think, is very good. It seems crazy to be saying that, but, but that's what it is. I agree, you know, the Blue Cross, Blue Shield, I think, is a much better company than the Harvard Pilgrim, there were a lot of complaints with that insurance, it just didn't seem to work real well, so the Blue Cross seems to be working well, so, you know, this, this health insurance problem plagues everyone, but I think that, you know, through the work of the committee and your assistance, I think that the town of Milford has come through this better than most, so thank you for, for your efforts in this.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you for the information you provided, it's helpful, and it's backed up by your presentation. I just wanted, Brian, I wanted to go over a couple of things you said, and I didn't get a chance to write them down.
Okay.
So the percentage, percentage of this increase, that's directly attributed to the Obamacare or Affordable Care Act, is, you said how much?
I didn't say a percentage, I gave you a dollar amount.
Dollar amount?
And it's about $224,000. So when you look at the amount of money that Milford is paying, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, $224,000 of that is for the Affordable Care Act.
And how much are we expected to pay in Blue Cross, Blue Shield, next year?
Next year? I, oh, you mean-
Within this current-
Oh, currently, you mean this year. The total is 11.9 million.
So out of that, there's 224 directly attributed to the Affordable Care Act, okay, that's helpful, I just wanted to get a sense of the proportion, and it's not a good thing, but-
It's about 2%, roughly about 2%.
You know what I've not seen, I don't know that I've ever seen it, and that's a detailed assessment of the benefits and the costs, and differences associated with GIC, a real in-depth analysis. Do we still do that, or do we do that in our analysis? Because I have employees asking me, when should we look at GIC? I know some, sometimes people approach and-
Well, when we met with insurance-
And for the benefit of anybody watching, the GIC is the state employee, employee health insurance program that towns can opt into.
Correct.
So, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Brian.
That's fine. When we had met with the insurance advisory committee, the GIC had not finalized what their product was going to look like, and they, they did so after the fact, and they also just recently finalized the prices. When you look at the actual dollar amount, the cost of, depending upon which product a person enrolls in, the GIC plan could be either less or more money-
Sure.
-because they offer Tufts Navigator, they offer Unicare, they have Harvard Pilgrim, so an employee, a town would have, have to offer all the GIC products, and employees kinda pick and choose where they wanna go.
Is there an analysis, a method of analysis, that benchmarks similar communities, that says, hey, you know, all things being equal, and assumptions being made, if, if town employees pick similar to this town, this is what your rate would likely be, and the analysis against the programs that we're providing, the premiums and the benefits? Has that ever been done?
Well, we kinda looked at that when we formed the PEC a few years ago, and we-
Yeah, it was a while ago.
Yeah, that, we more or less got pretty close to mirror image the GIC plan at that particular point in time. Clearly, that's changed, because now the GIC has changed their plans, they have, depending upon what tier hospital an individual's going, if they go to a third-tier hospital, I think the copayment is like now $1,500. So, we're not really comparing apples to apples, because in Milford, we don't have that, you know, we don't have a $1,500 copayment for somebody going into a third-tier hospital, it's just, it's just not there, and-
Right, but I get things that are anecdotal, and some of it is, you know, data that you can recall, but would it be possible to get that analysis?
To find out if, in fact, we mirror imaged?
So this is the way I would approach it, and I don't know how you might approach it, I know insurance has done very much different, but if I'm, if I'm trying to compare, say, Milford, I might pick a surrounding community, or similar, or like community, and say, okay, here's, their, their employees are in the GIC, here's how they opt in. You can't predict how Milford will opt, but for the, for the sake of assumptions and analysis, you can say, if we did what this community did, here's what your rates would be, and here are the costs, and here are the benefits and premiums. Is that something we could do, so that we could at least inform people with, with data?
I mean, I think that we can make an assumption, and Milford's structured where we could do something like that, because you have a PPO product you contribute 50% towards, you have an HMO product which you contribute 70% towards, so basically, what we could do is we could say, okay, fine, this is Milford's population, if you offered a GIC plan, X amount of people may migrate to Fallon, X amount may go to Harvard Pilgrim, we can do something like that, because structurally, you've already got your contribution set by product. Some municipalities haven't done that, and it's like, they'll do 80/20 across-
Yes, yes.
80/20 across the board, you know? Yeah, we could, we could do something like that.
How much effort would that be? Because we've, we've talked about it, but I've never seen the analysis, how much effort would that be to provide this board the analysis?
Wouldn't be that difficult.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be that difficult at all.
Could I get that, and I'd like to request through the chair, that, you know, not for these, not for this year, and not necessarily for next year, but at least when employees approach us, what we can do is say, hey, look, based on the last analysis, either it's a 20% increase, a 10% reduction, whatever it is, it is, it's just data, it's not good data or bad data, it's just data, and that would help me make informed decisions, and also maybe respond to people differently. That would be enormously helpful, I think it would be helpful to this board, I think it would be helpful to the retirement community, I think it would be helpful to the employee community, if we had, you know, maybe every three or four years, update that, and give that analysis, I think that, and if you say, now if I hear, it's not Herculean effort.
It's not, I mean, we'll just have to make some assumptions, and assume that, you know, X amount of people are gonna go to Fallon, some are gonna go to the Navigator Plan, some are gonna go to Harvard Pilgrim.
Yeah, nobody's holding you to those assumptions, or assumptions for the, for the purposes of budgeting and analysis, so, okay. That would be helpful, and I don't know if that's helpful to the other board members.
Yeah, get us that at some point.
Yeah, it's not that difficult to do at all.
Okay, great, great, I'd ask that, that be part of, you know, something that maybe we look for, what type of timeframe, couple of months?
More like a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
All right, that would be helpful, let's look out 30 days.
I just have one, just one question, point or whatever, and I know it's under $142, or whatever it is, let's say, in your experience, right, and like I say, you're well-respected, you do a great job, people tell you everything when they come to talk to you, if someone can't afford that increase, is, is there any type of a special fund where, if we really know that there's proof that they can't pay, what's the story with that?
We can direct them to the Commonwealth, well, I don't even know what the-
The Connector?
The Connector, yeah, Commonwealth Connector, and I believe they can go in and, based on their criteria, income, they can shop around for stuff like that.
So we advise them, we counsel them on that.
We do give them information on that, we haven't had anybody approach us in that, you know, nobody's happy about it, but we haven't had anybody, you know, come in and-
Okay, good.
And just one other thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't say it, and the chairman mentioned it, and I wanna follow it up, I also hear great things about your involvement with health plans, and I know you must deal with a great deal of personal matters with employees, but the guidance and the sensitivity at which you deal with employees is, is recognized, and I hear comments quite a bit, so I just wanted to give you that feedback as well.
Yep.
And I thank you for that.
I enjoy it, actually.
And it's obvious.
We thank you, tell the, the committee, we also appreciate everything that they do on a daily, a weekly basis, and yearly basis for us. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the recommendations as submitted by Kelly?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian?
I'll second.
Second by Bill, any discussion, all in favor, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian, Brian, welcome?
Thank you very much.
All right.
And once again-
Okay, thank you for everything, okay. Zach?
Gentlemen, how you doing?
Good, Zach, how are you?
I was gonna ask that Kelly-
Sure, yeah.
Sure.
Sure. Yeah. Okay, next is the interim finance director, and hopefully in a couple of months, that'll be a permanent finance director. Zach Taylor regarding a fiscal update, I've asked him to come in to provide the board with information on free cash stabilization as we go forward, he's also made some recommendations on salary, and all the other things associated with finances.
I apologize for not getting you this early, I just wrapped it up today, but-
Which one is it?
It's on date, or about February.
Okay, okay.
My service of a little bit of guidance to follow.
Yep. So Zach, just to give you some, a little bit of guidance, so, go over this sheet presently, where we are as far as the finances, how we're preparing for town meeting in May, and then beyond that, you know, what are we doing with the debt service and all that information, you know, we have a school that'll be breaking ground pretty soon, and free cash, and what we may be looking for as a potential amount for the October, when we look at the articles that the town needs.
Correct, okay, sounds good.
I just wanna say that, as always, you really, you're a tremendous find, and you've been doing a great job, and you really, really, really have the support of all the department heads, and they look for you for guidance, and I think going forward, I think you'll be a tremendous, significant help as far as finances, recommendations to this board, the financial department heads, and also to the finance committee, so.
Great, I appreciate that, you know, as always, I'll give my best efforts.
We're in great shape with you, Kelly, Paula Bandanza, who are our advisors, you know, okay? So with that, you can start your presentation.
All right, sounds good, so, just to touch on one of the topics you mentioned was free cash, so we currently have a balance of $1.4 million, a little over 1.4, and we will be able to utilize that if we so choose at the May town meeting, which we most likely will with Godfrey Brooke coming down the line, in order to keep the bids that, that have been put out there, we will most likely have to use free cash, so it's quite possible that we'll deplete most of this free cash before the end of this fiscal year, which if we didn't, it would kinda be null and void, and have to be recertified at that point, along with whatever else would come along with excess revenue, or whatever expenditures have, budgets haven't been depleted. So, again, we have 1.458, and we most likely will be spending most of that at this May town meeting, there's a couple of budgets that will need to be supplemented, and we have to use that source in order to do that, we can't raise and appropriate something for the current year, so we have plans for this money, and in the past, we have recycled a little bit, haven't used it all, this year, I think we're probably gonna use most of Stabilization, I had up, we obviously have not contributed since October, but I have updated for any unrealized gains and loss and realized interest, so, again, we're growing to a larger number, combined, we have a balance of 15.7 million, which is fantastic. We have, we maintain two stabilizations accounts, one with a balance of 13.7, which is our traditional account, which we know we plan on drawing down from once we actually bond the Woodland Project, and Kelly and I will talk about that a little bit later, and we also maintain a short-term account for capital needs that was established a few years ago, which is approaching 2 million, which is fantastic, too. New cherry sheet numbers came out, which I'm not sure if anyone had a chance to take a look at, but pleasantly surprised, Governor Baker released his numbers, which showed an increase of a little over $700,000 over last year, which is fantastic.
That's for us, right?
Yes, yep, that's overall, that's inclusive of offsets, chapter 70, unrestricted aid, so that's a really good number, however, that's just preliminary, and obviously, that could change, it's gotta go through a few other processes, but very, very good sign up front, so that's fantastic. So, the last time I met with your board, we were discussing what we're gonna do with the budget, and I actually had a meeting the following night with FinCom Executive Committee, so I didn't have a real strong, solid directive at that point. The following evening, we had met, and we kinda reviewed where we're at, taking what we're estimating for local receipts, for state aid, and at that time, we actually level-funded state aid, and as I always say, the magic of Prop 2 and 1/2, that's very predictable, with the exception of new growth, which we used a pretty modest number of 400,000, which has been much larger in the past, but can't always bank on that, so try to stay conservative there. So, when we met with FinCom- So when we met with FinCom, we looked at the numbers, we looked at what we wanted to do. We always try to keep our goals and objectives of some of the bigger picture outside of the operating budget, which is giving back to offset the levy capacity, which is budgeting for capital needs, which is budgeting for stabilization contributions, and then it kind of kicks out, okay, then what can we do for budgeting purposes? So I believe you have a copy of the memo that we put out, so. We agreed that we would, and this somewhat similar to the budget of FY fifteen, that we would for personal services accept up to two percent and that we would try to level fund general expenditures with the exception of national grid, which at the last meeting I also discussed, we're definitely facing at least a half million dollar increase. So what I actually did was we've been electronically sending out our budget sheets to department heads. So I built in the expected national grid hike or what the number should be for each department that actually utilizes that amount. Not every department pays for electricity, so I believe it's like eight of them and some of them a lot bigger than others. So we built that number in for them saying, hey, this is what you should budget for that. And total would have been an increase of around five hundred thousand over last year for electricity alone. So a lot of unions are negotiated to this point. There's a couple that will, that are not for FY sixteen. So what we try to do in those cases is not predict what it's gonna be and instead wait until it actually is negotiated and we'll supplement the budget in October. So that directive went out, had some real good feedback. I've already received some budgets that have been reviewed by FinCom and myself and are already submitted as finals. And again, this is guidelines, so sometimes you're gonna see budgets actually decrease, not all the time, but I just received one from the assessors that was ten thousand dollars reduced over last year, or this current year, which is great. Police chief submitted his, which is under one percent, which is fantastic too. So it's kind of gonna be a give and take. You're also gonna see a couple that are gonna go over the two percent due to step increases as well as the COLAR increase. So obviously we're aware of that and stuff like that will happen. However, we do wanna try to control the tax rate and the operating budget is the best way to do so, which obviously the largest amount of money is coming out of the operating budget. So we really don't wanna be seeing large, large increases and we really need to control that. So that's, that's the time of year right now, so we're gonna be plugging away at that, reviewing these accounts and making sure everything fits and making sure we control that, not only for this year, but for moving forward as well.
Because I think it's very encouraging when the police and fire, maybe highway, the biggest ones besides health insurance and all that. So when he comes in, when the chief comes in at one percent.
It was a pleasant surprise.
That's significant.
Yeah, no, it is. Very much is, talking over five million dollars. I mean, that's, that's huge, it's very good.
Zach, did you mention the snow, the snow deficit?
Yep. Your snow and ice, that's the hot topic right now, or cold topic, I should say.
We might be able to put that off, or you wanna take care of that?
We'll talk about it right now. So as you can see on the sheet I gave you, this is, I provided it as a cutoff of February. However, there's been a couple more weeks, so the number showed here is a little over four hundred thousand. The rail number is six hundred and twenty-five thousand in the hole. So it's deficit six twenty-five right now and we've got a couple more, hopefully only a month to go, but there's always a little bit of extra expenses that kind of trickle into that budget, repairing lawns and whatnot, mailboxes. So, but you never know, we could get hit again, hopefully not, but that's what we're looking at right now. Along those lines, the DOR just released some guidelines on the potential of amortizing, because you know you have to make this up on the tax recap. This is one of the only allowable deficit spent budgets that you can do per statute and with the understanding that you have to make it up in the following tax year. So we would be looking to make up, again, right now, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars right off the bat, like no choice. That's how it normally is. However, this year, the DOR recognizes that this has been a historic year and it's been out of the ordinary and they're actually allowing cities and towns, if they so choose, with the approval of your board, to amortize, now I don't like the word amortize, over two years in equal installments at minimum. So if we had to, I'm not sure I'm recommending that we do that. We'll deal with that when we get further down the line, when we see what our actual predicament is, our situation. But it is an option that we could, if we chose to, to amortize and split up this makeup over two years. My issue with that is what if next year we're in the same situation? So my stance would be if we can, let's do it. We can deal with it now and clear it, let's do it now. So that's what I would be looking at. However, it is an option, though I'm sure there's a lot of communities out there that cannot make it up. So that is something that, that we can flatter at, at minimum. The other thing that they're allowing and shouldn't say allowing, what they're talking about right now is potentially establishing a special revenue fund for any potential FEMA reimbursement. So we're still in a stage right now where we don't know exactly what we're gonna receive or if we're gonna even receive anything.
Zach, we put in for our request a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I believe?
Correct.
You know, it's gonna go up because they've since given new guidelines.
Yes, they have. So what, I talked to Scott today, actually, and what he had submitted was five weeks worth, or five storms, it's a full period. And again, there's no, there's no commitment on that right now. We're trying, it's kind of my opinion, wishful thinking, but you never know, it would be fantastic if we could. And I know what he's put together for submitting is, is almost equal to what this deficit is. So if somehow that could approve, that would be wonderful. And if we do end up getting approval, as I told you at the last meeting, sometimes you don't see that money for like a year later. So once six thirty comes and goes, that deficit's there and you're gonna make it up. So what DOR is talking about right now is if you are committed, if FEMA, MEMA, whatever it be commits, we will get you that money, then what I can do is establish a special revenue fund where I remove the expenditures out of the current budgets, department, move it over here and allow this fund to be deficit and allows the departments not to be deficit. So then when I close out the books, it's not gonna drop into effect free cash and all that.
And then the number that you move over would be satisfied upon receipt of the federal funds?
There you go. So once the, once the receipt comes in, bam, deposit into the special revenue fund, it zeroes it out.
Accounting trick, as it is.
There you go, yep, yep, that's the fun part. So again, this is all preliminary. Nothing says we're even committed to receiving anything, but again, it's an option. It's something that if we're coming down the line, if we're lucky enough to be committed to some reimbursement, that's something that I could also do.
You'll have to check the police chief, make sure he didn't use any of those tricks for his budget, right?
Yeah, exactly. So I'll keep you guys informed on that as well. Actual status on the budgets, we're two-thirds of the way through and we're less than the target if we were to expend two-thirds, so that's great as well. And we also, in this, embedded in this number is some of those larger one-time costs, such as like retirement appropriation. We already fired off our OPEB money, so that kind of puts it off a little bit too. So point being, we're in excellent shape. Kelly and I have completed the premium holiday with the exception of retirement, I believe.
That is completed as well.
That's completed too, okay. So that was very successful. Couple small hiccups along the way that we were able to iron out, but that's definitely contributing to this figure here that we're looking at. Because it was, remember, it was also a holiday for the town as well. So that should definitely help out with our free cash for FY fifteen into FY sixteen. I couldn't tell you what figure of what it would actually be. I mean, we still have four more months to go, so I don't know where free cash, what it'll look like, but this will definitely play a role and I'll tell you that much.
But that was a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of savings, right?
It's probably more like seven, eight hundred.
Seven, eight, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, it was, it was very good.
Again, you don't know what's gonna happen at the end of free cash, but we know that one line item.
Will help out for sure. Yep, exactly. So that's an update there. OPEB, kind of banging away at that too, taking a slow and steady approach there. Again, we have that built into the operating budget. We're gonna continue to fund it that way and we'll continue to monitor it. It's a pretty hot topic amongst accountants, treasurer, municipalities. So we'll keep ourselves informed and see where the trend's going, but I recommend that we continue to fund it through the operating budget as we are right now. So back on state aid, again, the numbers that came in preliminary are very, very good. We were nervous at, at first that there was even a possibility would be cut, but Governor Baker stuck to his word. He said he was gonna help out cities and towns and he wasn't gonna cut anything. And in fact, we're looking at a seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar increase in the receipt side. And then you always have to take a look at your assessments too, as the way they handle it. They say, all right, Dino, it's twenty dollars, but I'm taking two dollars back, so. So on the assessments, it was only an increase of sixty-five thousand, which is excellent. So we're looking at a net of around seven hundred thousand dollars of an increase.
And like you said, Zach, I think, you know, the governor throughout his entire campaign, that's what he said. Protect local aid for the cities and towns and it's nice to see when a politician gets in and keeps his word and that's most important. So you can trust, you can trust the, the governor now. You can trust him what he says and all that, and that's most important. Because in all these numbers, I mean, I think whether it be the Select Board yourself or the FinCom, whenever we say something, we have to maintain, make sure we maintain that and come to fruition. Now, if something comes up, sometimes variables are there and all that, we have to change, but I think it's so important to stick to what we say. And I think, you know, throughout the years, I mean, what does this board say? Hey, let's, let's be prudent, let's, you know, take care of the articles, the budgets, nominal increases. We haven't hired many new employers, employees. I know this year we've hired a few people for technology, but that's important. And we've planned for the Woodland School over ten years and now that's come to fruition. And that's right on line. And the other thing, and I think a lot of people pull poor it and even some individuals who may be running for office, but not taxing to the full levy, that's important, that's not insignificant. You know, most towns don't do that. So when we're taking care of the community and doing the best we can, and I think we all know that the public certainly wants services and programs and that costs money. So you want education, you want public safety. And while we're able to do all those things, working together, we don't tax to the full levy and that's a benefit to the person who has to pay the bill. You know, we're all in the same situation here. So I think, you know, that has to be a goal going forward. And the other thing is that this board and other boards, you know, no, no exclusions, no two and a half overrides. And I think we've been able to do it. So now we have a situation where we're taking care of most of the capital, the buildings. And once we do Woodland, there might be something else that comes up, like a roof or whatever the case may be. But I think the town's done a good job in, you know, preparing for the future.
Yeah, definitely.
Because at one time, in the seventies, early eighties, you know, all these buildings were old, nothing was done. And it was easy to do things without two and a half, but then when two and a half came in. So I think the town is, is in good shape going forward and I think the residents deserve the best services. And I also think we watch, we've always been a conservative community, so I think, and you know, if we can maintain those goals and, and we can have, you know, Governor Baker continuing to assist the cities and towns with local aid and Representative Fernandez does a great job for us. So, you know, I'd make sure, you know, maintain close contact with John just to see what the latest is at the, at the state level. But and I just think going forward, I think as a finance director, and your job is to advise this board, you know, the board makes the, the priorities and sets the tone, but you provide the most valuable information that we can have is the monies, the budget, looking at the future. And I think your job is also to advise the FinCom, to work with the FinCom in providing the valuable information. That's why you're here.
Yeah.
Just to do that.
Definitely.
I think people are finding that very, you're a diamond in the rough and you're doing a great job and the better job you do in advising us, the better the community, better services being provided and we can maintain all the things that we've set as a priority.
Now, one of the things you had mentioned was the excess levy, you know, I'm glad you did mention that because you hear me up here all the time talking about my goals and objectives and all that and one of them is also to control the tax rate. So when we talk about excess levy, that is available, however, we utilize that. All of a sudden taxes like hike a lot more than what we want to have allowed. So that is always one that, in my opinion, that money there is pretty much off the table. I mean, obviously we can use it, but by taking advantage of that means obviously a lot higher taxes. So that's always one objective that we definitely try to meet when we're doing our thing, meeting with FinCom, doing our financial team in-house and looking at the articles and all that. And with that said, I apologize for not having a full capital plan put together for you tonight. We've been very, very busy and I wanna make sure this is done properly. But I will be putting something together in my office and I will be reaching out to the finance committee to vet it with them and we'll be reaching out to the CIC. What I wanna do is put something together that's all-inclusive. We need everybody on the same page. I don't want mixed directives out there and then just chaos and more confusion. So I know when the memo came out about the capital list and the plan, I think a lot of people panicked a little bit and they threw everything that they could possibly think of out there. So it's certainly, when you look at the list that's put together now, there are definitely items on there that will not be funded this year and probably not for the next year, but they're on there in case they need to be. So obviously capital planning is a very, very good thing. It should be done, but it needs to be done properly. So what we're doing, what's been done in the past, and this might be a bad analogy, but we've, we, warrant will open up, a lot of articles would come on and kind of like view them as somewhat of puzzle pieces and we put them together and say, how can we fund these? And it's worked in the past, however, my fear is in the future, we're gonna end up with extra pieces and that will come across a year where it won't work, which is why capital planning is so vital and important. So we can look to the future and say, all right, this is what's coming up. Obviously, we're not, we're not all, we can't predict exactly what's gonna happen. So there's gonna be times where something's on there and when we review it and look at it, is it necessary now? Or can it be kicked off another year? That's definitely going to happen.
Before we get to the board, you know, when you have time, maybe in the summertime, whatever, maybe you can provide the board with, looking at cap, how we look at capital planning, the articles and all that, the process that we have now.
Definitely.
Maybe what process could be put into play that would be more fruitful and productive for the community going forward?
That is definitely my plan. I also, with my, my vision is to also put something together that can educate some department heads that may not fully understand the process, what your board's involvement as the executive level and the legislative level, a town meeting and, and just how a request turns into an appropriation. So what I wanna do is make this full process, not, not only just to show what should be done, how it should be done, but why it should be done. So that's something that I'm definitely working on and I'll be back to have it presented in front of you and hopefully adopted, so.
I just think we have to be, you know, like we always try to do is be totally open, transparent. I don't like that word, but, and we have to be accountable.
Yeah, definitely. Let's face it, we're definitely gonna be, we're definitely gonna be dealing with some really tough budget years and we just have to be financially responsible. And one step is proper capital planning, so capital budget planning, all that. So again, I want something in place before October. The warrant's already been opened this, this time around and the message is out there about planning and we'll definitely, we wanna take it to the next level. And I know there was some confusion out there, so hopefully I can clarify everything and we can get a solid plan that everyone's on board with, so.
There has to be one point, you can't have two or three people talking. So you have to work closely with the administrator.
Absolutely.
Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Absolutely.
And, you know, whatever. And, uh, you know, whatever has to be done. And, uh, you know, bring all those recommendations to Rick and this board, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that.
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
One more thing, which I, why I asked Kelly to hang around for a little while, um, just keep you informed. This time last year, you, you, your board had signed a couple of bands, which is the bond anticipation notes. One for, um, Geriatric, which was 6.2 million, and one for Woodland, which was 6 million. They mature in about a month.
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. So we're faced with some decisions here. Geriatric is about to complete their project, so it makes complete sense for us to, uh, bond that project right now. Interest rates are great, I think it was 3%.
Yeah, they estimated 3%.
3%, which, which is fantastic. So, uh, out of a courtesy, we have the, the, uh, plan that we have in place submitted to, um, Barry Chyla to review to make sure that the term, which is currently, we have proposed at 20 years, make sure they could pay it, you know? So that will definitely directly increase the operating budget. However, it will also increase our local receipts as they pay dollar for dollar. So for that purpose, it kind of comes out in a wash. Now, what we decided to do with, um, or deciding to do with Woodland is, obviously, we're not even close to completing that yet. And, um, our cash flow is actually excellent there. We're getting reimbursement from, um, MSBA as we go, which is different from the old process. So as we're paying, we're getting around 54% back into the fund to be utilized again. So the 6 million that was borrowed last year was probably a little too high and not necessary at that level. But it is necessary now. So what we're planning on doing is rolling the 6 million as a, as a band again. And, uh, we have no intentions right now of piecing it out or phasing it out. So the 6 million, if we roll again, should be sufficient enough to get us through the next year. We won't have any, uh, wax against free cash with a deficit fund. And we'll revisit it this time next year to see if we want to get serious about bonding it. So what that means is that there will be, uh, again, no impact of this project as far as the operating budget in FY16, besides, um, the short-term account, which could be 40.
Forty.
Forty thousand.
Forty, yeah. Forty, forty-two thousand.
Yeah, something like that. And, um, because one thing you want to, you want to make sure that you don't overbond because if you do that and the project comes in lower, then you're really stuck with that money. You, you, you can't move it out of there, can't drop to the general fund. It just hangs there until you have a project of similar nature, which, uh, hopefully, we don't have something like that for a while. So what, what we're really trying to do is get closer and closer and see what we can really do. And with, and with that said, is why I gave the warning that we really need to be tight with these budgets because we're good right now, but we have not, we have not bonded this and that is coming down the line. It's gonna be a significant amount of money. And we know that we have a stabilization account that's gonna deal with it, but we certainly do not want to deplete that either, so. Um, that's just an FYI. Kelly and I will be back in a month or so to get. To get, um, approval for this plan and we'll get into it in a lot more detail at that point.
Writing for the board too, Zach?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I'm satisfied at this point, if you have any questions.
Zach, great job. Now we'll go to the board members, Brian?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diamond. Let me just step away from the numbers a little bit and, and just kind of take more of a bird's eye view of the process. And let me just tell you what I see. What I see right now, and I think probably for the first time, is I guess what I would call comprehensive organization. It's clear that you've given considerable thought to, um, all aspects of the budget. Operating, capital, um, borrowing aspect. And it's very comforting for me to see that type of a comprehensive plan being put forth. And I feel very comfortable going into the budget cycle this year, unlike some years in the past. You know, we're trying to get everybody together and we don't know, you know, who's a player and who's not and what the aspect is. But, uh, I can really see, you know, the benefit of, of the position and, and your abilities in the position. And like I said, it is comforting going forward in this budget cycle to see this degree of organization and focus, you know? So, so I think that's very, very encouraging. Let me ask you this, when do you anticipate departmental budgets being available for this board to review?
We, we put out a directive to have it reviewed, not only by myself, but, um, by the, by the FinCom subcommittees by, uh, the middle of this month. And then I want a final submission by April 1st.
Okay.
So, um, hopefully, right around that timeframe, I should not only have the individual budgets for you, but a completely organized Article Four submitted for your review as well, very shortly after. So I'm already, as they're coming in, we, we.
Okay, so that's.
My office is very organized with, um, as, as they're submitted, we, we have a routine of where, of what we're trying to do, making sure that it fits the parameters. And if we know they're reviewed by, um, the proper parties, it's, it's going right into Article Four, so.
Is there a point at some time before that, perhaps when these departmental budgets are in the formative stages, that we would get a chance to, to review that? Or, or maybe even some aspects of the budgets, you know? I mean, you know, some budget that might be not an issue. There might be a department budget, you know, there could be a couple of questions. You know what I'm saying? Is that, is that something that?
Definitely.
You know, that this board can be brought into?
Absolutely. Like I said, um, I'm hoping that everyone cooperates and gets me preliminaries within the next week. And as I mentioned earlier, given an example of a couple, I've already been, I probably have 10% of them right now. And hopefully, this week, I'll start to get a lot more that should be flowing in. And, uh, you have department heads such as Rick that has probably 20 budgets, you know? So that's definitely a possibility, yes.
We'll stay after him, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the ability is there. If you target some areas that you, you know, want an extra set of eyes and ears on or something, we can, we can work that process through.
Definitely.
Okay, yeah, no, great work.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Bill?
Zach, I appreciate, uh, you providing what I also view as comprehensive, um, analysis on the budget and, uh, great detail that you've added verbally. Yeah, just, just a few comments. I'm encouraged by the governor's budget as well. The only caution I have for everybody listening is the House and Senate decide what the budget is. The governor can veto line items, but, uh, the budget comes out of the legisla- legislators. Uh, so while it's, there's reason to be optimistic, it's not reason to do backflips yet.
Shouldn't take it for granted.
Yeah, um, so optimism is good and I appreciate optimism. Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully it'll be higher.
While they grapple with a $1.5 billion deficit, uh, they can do a lot of moving around of money that may have an impact to the community of Milford. So I remain cautious, cautiously optimistic. You know, when I look at the balance sheet right away, I look at stabilization fund of $15 million and say, or 15.7 million dollars and say, look, we're flush with cash. Can you tell me a little bit about where that fund goes in the next few years? I, I, I want to talk about what's committed to that budget, um, so that, uh, as people start to look at that number, we realize that we put away money for Woodland, we put away money for, for other purposes. What's that fund go to, uh, in the next five years?
Well, one of the main purposes of reporting for undesignated fund balance at, um, the financial reporting level is that it is not earmarked for anything, however.
Understood.
Yep, however, we.
Our plan.
Our plan for, again, we have the two stabilization accounts, the traditional one that we've maintained for years, is definitely to utilize to control the debt. So that probably will not be tapped into until FY17, maybe even 18, once we do bond Woodland. And, um, that is meant to control the operating budget, so it'll definitely be drawn down. And that's the, um, 13. That was the 13.7 million, so simultaneously, we're also contributing on an annual basis to that. So we don't expect it ever to drop below hopefully 7, 8 million dollars, however. But that is the main purpose of that, to control debt.
But the plan is to let that 15 million dollars go to 7, so we don't impact our operating budget. So we don't, you know, have to go look at new creative ways to cut insurance or to cut personnel.
Correct.
I mean, that, that's how you save your operating budget. You save your people and you save your benefits.
Correct, yeah. We, we've had a very aggressive approach over the past, since I've been here in the past five years with contributing to that fund with the understanding that we're gonna tap into it at some point. We're gonna control our operating budget. Uh, the other one, it's almost at 2 million dollars. Again, um, per statute, it's, it's unrestricted, could be used for anything. However, when it was first established, it was seeded with a million dollars. There was the understanding that eventually we're gonna need a new ladder truck. So of that 2 million, half of that.
Gone.
Is basically gone.
Essentially, I mean.
Said, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, Tommy can do a lot of different things with that money.
Good, yep.
But that's the plan from the financial planning team.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, that helps a great deal. You know, I don't want to go through it all now, but, you know, when we talk about capital plan for next year, it's far more important to me that between now and then, between now and the creation of a capital plan for October, that we have a capital planning process. So what I encourage you to do and my ask of you is that you create that process and allow this board to review it and see it.
That's definitely the plan.
Alright. And to be honest with you, do you have a sense of when that might be, when that might come out?
Before the end of the fiscal year, I'd say, for sure.
Yeah, I would say that, that, that's probably, we're in sync in terms of the timing because then you have to need, you need to then go out and communicate it.
Exactly.
Uh, educate people so that they understand what it is that you've created and are talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully sometime in May, it can be back here.
Alright, and I, you know, I still want to remind people that, uh, you know, you've talked about Godfrey Brook, uh, some of the other challenges and threats that we have ahead of us that we know that, uh, are, are only gonna be solved with a fair amount of cash or technology, certainly.
Yes.
We've got stormwater management that continues to be.
Coming down the line.
A huge risk to this community. I want to tell you to be cautious. And one other thing I'd like to, uh, see you, uh, begin to work with Scott on is what we're gonna do with the roads.
Okay.
Um, the roads are as damaged as I've ever seen them.
Yeah.
In any past year. So I think, uh, we're gonna need some help with roads in this community.
Definitely.
Uh, with this budget. I know in the past years, we've added additional $500,000. I don't see how you don't do that and how we don't as a community do that, uh, but I want to hear more about it. And the only other thing, I know that you put out a, um, budget guidance, um, and I appreciate, uh, you copying us on that. Where you talked about, uh, electricity. What I want to understand is the extent to which the, uh, electric tax credits for us signing up for solar tax credits is going to help with that offset. I'd like to understand, now that we're a few years into this program, what those credits mean? How much of those go to general funds and how we may be able to assist those, those budgets and department budgets with that increase or at least, at least show that there's a correlation.
Yeah.
Um, so I've not seen, you know, how we're doing on the tax credits, uh, and the, the funds that are coming back.
Net metering credits?
The net metering credits, I should have said. Uh, but I'd like to see that. I don't want to take up more of your time because we have the next person on the agenda, uh, who's waiting to, to get some time with us. But I would like to see that, uh, capital planning process.
Definitely.
I would like to see the impact of net metering credits. And I appreciate you going over, uh, how much of that, uh, $15 million stabilization fund is, is what we're talking about committed or at least to the, we have a plan for it.
We do.
And that plan will likely take it down into the $7 million range. Now, we're not all predictors of the future, we don't have crystal balls. It may do more and it may do less, depending on what we've got to do. Between now and the next seven, eight years.
Exactly.
But there is a plan and we're following it.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Zach, and thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
So is there a vote needed here? Uh, is there anything?
I don't think so, no.
Think so either?
No.
Okay, Zach.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kelly, thank you. Okay, sir? Yep, yes, I'm sorry. How are you? I'm sorry, yeah, right in the front room.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. This is an application for transfer license to Hunan Express Incorporated, doing business as Hunan Gourmet. Transfer existing license, common vitula. Ma'am, your name?
Johnny.
Okay. Okay. And the, looking at the department review form. The building is not handicap accessible. This is the place right on Jefferson Street, right?
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's the Jefferson Street, yeah.
No outstanding taxes, fire department, no objection. Okay, ma'am, can you just tell us a little bit, have you been in business for what type of?
Chinese.
20 years?
I think probably more than like 30 years, I think, as the, the owner right now. I think the first owner is American, the second owner would be like Chinese.
I see, okay.
And right now, it's Chinese too.
Okay. Rick, is all the paperwork in order?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You're, you're gonna be the new, the license is gonna be in your name now, right?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay. You're gonna make any changes at that establishment or no?
No.
Same thing?
Yes, I'm, yes, same time, Chinese.
Alright, and the hours would be, uh, Sunday to Saturday, 10:30 a.m. to 11 o'clock at night?
That's right.
Hey ma'am, you live on Congo Street?
Near Congo Street, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to the board members, Brian?
Good luck. I'll be bye for some makefu young later on.
Yep, okay, sure. So I'll say, bye.
No, 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 wait a minute, you don't have to get it out.
No, we have, uh, we have a great business run by somebody who is also living in town and, uh, they have a good reputation. So I, I'm happy to see this go forward and I, I'm gonna wish you a lot of luck as well.
Okay, is there a motion, motion?
I'll move.
Brian?
Second.
Second, I feel, any discussion? Oppose, if you have any questions, you can, you know, contact our administrator, okay?
I don't.
Alright.
Sorry about, sorry about the wait.
So I'll say.
I'll say.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, bye-bye. Alright, now we'll go to the, that concludes the, uh, meetings and scheduled appointments. Now we'll go to the town administrators' report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little more detail on the snowstorm federal disaster assistance. MEMA has indicated that all 10 counties have met the thresholds for public assistance and for snow assistance. They are now preparing what they call a major disaster declaration request letter that will be submitted by the governor to the president. Also, while traditionally FEMA does not recognize cumulative impacts of multiple storms as a qualifying circumstance for a major disaster declaration, in this instance, they believe that the extraordinary circumstances of the significant storms over a short period of time make a compelling argument for them to consider expanding the disaster declaration for the January 20, uh, January Blizzard to include the additional storms and associated costs. So what they have requested is that the town submit one completed initial damage assessment reflecting all costs for the storms, um, in January, Feb, and the three in February. The fire chief has filed this report with help from both the police chief and the highway surveyor. And MEMA will now use this information to build what they call the strongest case possible for additional, uh, federal disaster assistance. And it, Zach had mentioned the numbers for you. Just a brief update on Milford Pond work, believe it or not, has begun at the pond. The work crew is mobilized, they're moving forward on the project. Currently, they are building the boundaries of the area to be filled. This will help to create the islands and I will keep the board updated as the project progresses. Just an update on the, uh, what I call the selectmen request list, uh, just four items. Unfortunately, weather is driving some of them. One, the Carver, Carver Road pole relocation. This will now have to wait until the spring, until, uh, unfortunately, we, uh, get rid of some of this snow and it gets warmer because this will include what they call a raised landscape island. Two other projects that are still ongoing, the 495 Sign Route, 16 and Cedar Streets, again, will have to be installed in the spring. And then we had one other issue, if you remember, uh, we had a resident up by the high school that had some concerns over the lighting from the football field, track area. That resident has been contacted and it was agreed, and he agreed, or they agreed, that the meeting now will wait till April so that we can really review the lighting, um, in the best possible sense. And he is in agreement with that. One other item I would like to bring up is the farmer's market rezoning. After several meetings with Jen Yon, who's the. After several meetings with Jen Yon, who's the principal of that organization, Town Planner, myself, as well as discussions with the planning board and two meetings with the planning board, an article to provide for a farmer's market by special permit in an RA residential zone has been prepared for the May. Town meeting will be on the warrant, subject to the board agreeing. The planning board has agreed to sponsor the article, so it took some time, unfortunately, but I think we now have everybody on the same page, so I'm happy to report that that will go forward.
That was certainly quite a meeting, Rick. That was quite a meeting.
Yeah, you've got to admire Jen and the group, they're very passionate, and they work hard at that farmer's market. And so I'm happy to report that that will go forward, and that's all I have at this time.
Brian, any questions for Rick?
No, no questions.
No.
No, I'm glad you brought up the farmer's market. I originally brought this up a couple of years ago to push for zoning that would, that would allow for a farmer's market to go in areas such as schools, and I'm glad to see that's happening. And hopefully, the town meeting and this board will take it favorably and move it forward.
Rick, on the sound system, sound system, anything more on that?
Yep, we're just waiting to have them install. The contract has been signed. That will be done by May, I promise.
Okay.
Oh, it's, you're planning on that being implemented in time for the town meeting?
Absolutely.
I like your.
Hey, that was the goal.
I know, I know.
That's the goal, I've made it very clear, and I'm told it can be done.
All right. Now we'll go to old business. Rick, on the recommendation network administrator?
Yes, as you know, this board, as well as the Personnel Board, did approve of the position of a network administrator. It was advertised in the Daily News, was posted on the website, deadline was last week. We did receive 11 applications. They were reviewed by myself and the IT Director, Paul Blivis. After reviewing the applications, it was clear that Brandon Van Dell was the most qualified individual for the position. I'm recommending him for the position. As you know, or you should know, that he's been serving as an IT technician for the town since August of last year. In my opinion, his work has been exemplary. He's already made significant contributions to prove the technology at town hall and in the schools. I'm very satisfied with his performance. The major factor for me, and for Paul, was that he served as a network administrator in the Oxford Schools for approximately four years, served as a network data manager in the Dudley Charlton Regional School District also for about four years. If you were to approve of this recommendation, I would also request that he be placed at a grade three, step two salary position with a starting salary of $62,316,000. I would also request to be allowed to begin working in this position officially tomorrow, March 10th. I could include his resume for you also.
Any questions or not, is there a motion?
I'll be glad to move.
Motion by Brian?
I'll move and with comment. It's nice, once again, or I'll second with comment. It's nice, once again, to see some of these positions going to people that live in Milford. We know we have highly skilled taxpayers, they pay taxes here, and where, if at all possible, benefit of the doubt, go to the local resident. I'd be very happy and continue to be happy with that.
Thank you.
Nice work, and I know you've had the opportunity to, to see him and his work, because he's already worked for us, but great skills, good background.
Yes.
Yeah, I met the individual, young man about a month ago, was very impressed. The way he came across, the way he expressed himself, his goals, wants to do the best he can for this board and for the, for the community, so very impressed. Okay, that's unanimous. Next, Rick, on the business, businesses?
Yes, I did provide to you minutes that were prepared from a meeting of the business owners, which was held on February 19th of this year. President was also, was the chairman, the building inspector, Town Planner, as well as the Chamber of Commerce CEO, and a number of area businessmen and women, two of them who could not attend, submitted letters, which I also attached for the board. Each business owner and or property owner was provided an opportunity to speak. The major areas discussed, the primary one I would say was parking. Almost everyone labeled this as a significant issue. They encouraged having employees park in municipal lots, leaving Main Street for customers. The second issue, almost in conjunction with parking, was traffic. Several people were concerned over the traffic. They suggested maybe better coordination of lights, better traffic flow, and also maybe increasing or having more clear signage as to direct customers to parking areas. Third area that a number of them voiced concerns over were just cleanup. One area, the awnings, they feel are in need of replacement. I guess this was done, as you gentlemen know, several years ago. They were concerned about some of the homemade signs, what they called, in windows and trash around certain areas of town. Another issue was the issue of the trees on Main Street. We had a kind invitation from Paul Gilbarty from the Milford Federal Savings and Loan Association, and he said the bank would be willing to work with the town to help resolve this issue of uprooting and overgrown trees on Main Street, creating sidewalk cracks, et cetera. So we will be setting up a meeting as soon as he is able to meet, to discuss that further. Another issue that was discussed was the issue of residential apartments, possibly on the second and third floor buildings. There are a number of property owners who are in support of this possibly being brought up again, as I know it's been brought up in the past. Possible future actions that were discussed, a number of the people in attendance agreed that they would establish, or would be willing to establish a subcommittee which they would serve on, so they could bring the recommendations and work on resolving some of these issues, contacting certain business owners to try to clean up certain areas in town. And one other item that was discussed is the possibility of hiring or establishing a position, for lack of a better term, an economic development coordinator, to oversee or promote the downtown area. So you had a, you had a group of individuals who were certainly concerned about the area. Many of them have owned property in the Main Street area for many, many years. So it was, it was nice to hear from them, and hopefully some resolutions can be set up.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, the information is with us now, and, you know, in the springtime, we can take a look at it, maybe start implementing some of the things that can be done on a short-term basis, and then maybe even set up a subcommittee. A few calls during the past week, people want to be involved. And I, I think, you know, going forward, it's difficult, because we have to, it's gonna be very difficult to obtain a grant, but that's what happens when the monies come in, and the grant is over, and then everything. But we were successful with Sue Clark and Melissa receiving about $12 million. But maybe at some point, if we can, if the town can come up with some monies, and businesses may be able to contribute a portion of it, to hire a, maybe a part-time person to, to be a Main Street coordinator, and also maybe do some things with grants, so, you know, job description should be looked at, and then maybe at some point, the, that town can entertain it. So the, you know, I think, I think we know most of the concerns, and some of these concerns are new. Vahas Akishin expressed himself very well, and also the lady who runs the physical therapy place on Main Street. So there are some things, Rick, that, you know, you can do right away, as soon as the snow is, is gone. But it's good information they have for the future, you know? Okay. Brian, anything on the old business?
No, I don't have anything.
I could just add, it was just, I presented to you a lease agreement tonight, it was not on the agenda. This is for the Purchase Street School and Portable Buildings. We did go out to bid. It was advertised in the Milford Daily News and the Central Register. We only had one bid on the lease, it was from the Little Stars Daycare and Preschool LLC. The principal there is Alexandra Alves. The lease, they are the current lessees of the property. Their five-year lease had expired. This is an additional five-year lease period with a rental of $1,200 per month. Tenant also pays taxes, which though is applied to the rent. They also pay utilities, water, sewer. The lease was reviewed and negotiated by Town Council. So if the board is so inclined, I would ask you to vote to award the lease to the Little Stars Daycare and Preschool LLC and sign three originals of the.
Chairman, I'd ask, since this wasn't on the agenda, I didn't have any opportunity to, to review this document. I'd like, if this isn't time sensitive, I'd like the opportunity to review it.
Okay. So nothing else on the old business? Okay, no business. Rick, the elected official's salary?
Yes, you have a recommendation before you of 2% for the elected officials listed there under Article Three. The fiscal year '16 salaries are listed to the right column there.
Is there a motion?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion, all in favor, oppose, unanimous. Okay, we have, I believe, five zoning bylaw amendments. One is zoning bylaw relating to obstructions permitted in required yards. Next one was inadvertently omitted, a section of completion of plantings. And the other one is relating to grading and drainage on individual lots, and these would be approved. And the planning board would have public hearings and then place on the town meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, and that's unanimous. And the other two zoning bylaw amendments would be eight acres of rezoning on Midway Road, and also the farmer's market bylaw that was discussed by the town administrator. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, any discussion, all in favor, oppose, unanimous. We have a couple of street acceptances, Roland Way, Woodland Court.
Yeah, I'll move.
Yeah, remand to the planning board and all that, and that's unanimous. And then lastly, on the new business, Rick, the request of funds for the handicap parking signs?
Yes, there was a request by Harold Rhodes, the Chairman of the Commission on Disability, to request using funds collected from handicap parking fines for the benefit of persons with disabilities. He pointed out that many, many cities and towns do allow the use of such fines, basically to help improve the quality of life for their disabled citizens. I did, he did provide a list of some of the communities and what they might do. Also, I have a list for the board's benefit showing the past four years, what was collected by the town of Milford in handicap parking funds. In reviewing this with Town Council, Chapter 40, Section 22G of the Massachusetts General laws authorizes town, which has accepted the provisions of General Law Chapter 40, Section 8J, to deposit all or part of the funds received for violation of handicap parking regulations in a separate account for utilization by a commission on disability, again, for the benefit of persons with disabilities. What Section 8J is, it just authorizes and provides an outline of the powers of the Commission on Disability. Milford did not accept Section 8J, but chose instead to create its own commission on disability in 1985. It is Town Council's opinion that there's nothing inconsistent with the vote now by the Milford Town Meeting to accept this statute and then to allocate all or a portion of the funds received as parking receipts. So the board will need to consider, one, to accept HA, as well as to decide on a percentage of allocation of funds to be collected and used by the Commission on Disability, if they so choose.
What's your recommendation for the portion?
The recommendation I would make would be just, would be 50% of the, I've talked with Mr. Rhodes, and he's comfortable with that at this point. He has a number of things that he thinks he could use that money for, to enhance, obviously, the quality of life for our disabled individuals.
You know, if the board approves this, you know, we could always, the board could always go up to 100% next year or the year after.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve on both counts.
Okay, motion by Brian?
Mr. Chairman, just for the benefit of discussion, we're talking about, you know, a fund that fluctuates between $12,000, $7,700, that area. You know, I don't know why we just couldn't go to the 100% funded, although there are many communities that do, benefiting the folks with disabilities, I think is a great idea. I don't think we're jumping into a very deep pond when we're talking about either our budget. These are funds that come as a result of parking fines and violations. I'd just ask the board to consider 100%, but I'd certainly support 50% if that's where the board's preference is.
So you make a motion to amend it?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to amend it to 100%.
All right, all right. Second, second.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any discussion, all in favor?
We'll do it.
You know, we have one person on that board, I mean, the whole, the entire committee is an excellent committee, but Mike Nicholson is a tremendous watchdog, so I'm sure the monies will be appropriated well and they'll be spent well, so that's unanimous.
Great work, yeah.
Anything on the new business, Brian?
I don't have anything, no.
Bill?
No, nothing on the new business.
Okay, Rick, correspondence?
Yes. Sergeant Michael Jones is here. He's the commanding officer of the auxiliary police. He is recommending the appointment of six Milford residents to serve as auxiliary police officers with the Milford Police. Provided the names to the board. This is a volunteer position, as you know. And basically, we'd be looking for a vote from the board to appoint these six individuals here.
Sergeant, how are you? You look pretty sharp tonight.
Thank you, sir. It's a long time since I sat in this chair.
All right.
A long time.
And the chief, the chief's statement, Rick?
Yes, the chief just added a memo here. One of the persons to be appointed is his son, Kevin. So he just wanted to point out that there's the conflict, potential conflict of interest. Therefore, he has had Sergeant Michael Jones deal with this and address this matter directly with me, and that's why he's here today, before the board.
Sergeant, anything else?
No, sir, if you have any questions.
Rick, do you have any recommendations?
Yes, no, I would recommend that all six be appointed.
Sergeant, same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion, all in, all in favor, oppose, unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that was quick, huh?
Quick and painless.
All right.
After you delay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you for coming.
Anything else, correspondence or anything else?
I don't have anything.
No, neither do I.
We do have one item tonight for collective bargaining regarding the police department with Town Council. And that's for a motion for executive session.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And we will not be coming back into open session. Good night.